Brother Dylan, thank you for all that you do as a part of the Board of Trustees. We welcome you back to Antioch Central this evening.
Well, bless the Lord, everybody. Are you happy? If you're not, you're in the right place. If you're too happy, no, you can't be too happy, can you? Well, it's always, it's always a pressure, I mean a pleasure to come to Maryland and serve on this board and be around these wonderful people, visionaries, rock-solid people, and to preach in whatever service church they say, they say go, we just go. So tonight I have, I'm first, so I don't know, I might take one or two hours, I'm not really sure, but most likely not, unless the Spirit of Bishop Wright comes on me, then God only knows what could happen, but in any event, we'll just start here for just a moment. I want to read out of the book of John, chapter 5, beginning at verse number 19, and it says, "Then answered Jesus and said unto them, Verily, verily, I say unto you, The Son can do nothing of himself but what he saith the Father do; for what thingssoever he doeth, these also doeth the Son likewise; for the Father loveth the Son, and showeth him all things that himself doeth, and he will show him greater works than these, that ye may marvel. For as the Father raises up the dead, and quickens them, even so the Son quickeneth whom he will. For the Father judges no man, but hath committed all judgments to the Son, that all men should honor the Son even as they honor the Father. He that honors not the Son, honors not the Father, which hath sent him." Father, in your name, open our heart and our mind to receive the Word of the Lord, and help us, God, to be interactive with your Spirit and with the gift of faith that can flow. And we ask you in Jesus' name, and everybody said amen? Please be seated. I was thinking about the, the things that are shoved upon us from a spiritual dimension, all the things that are written about faith and the power of God, and all the movers and shakers that want to say they have faith, and they say the right words. But how many understand that faith is not just saying the right words? It's about having faith. And if you have faith, you will say and do things. When, when the Lord wants to do a work in us, he does not do a little partial job in us. He is a complete and a whole God. In fact, his word says, "We are complete in him." Everybody said, "Complete." And so, when we begin to serve God, how many understand that sometimes your weaknesses show up? And you have this, you have this thing called an inner voice that wants to mock you, wants to tell you how bad you are, how incomplete you are, how unsuccessful you are. That's not God, by the way, I just want, I think you know that, but that's not God talking to you. The Lord never condemns, he convicts, and I want just, you know, we, we read a lot of things in the Word of God that leaves us, the more you read it, the, maybe the more desensitized we become to it, we become. Just out of Matthew, chapter 12, and verse 22, it says, "And they brought unto him one possessed with the devil, blind and dumb, and he healed him, in so much that the blind and the dumb both spake and saw." Well, how, how well do we understand that? Well, Jesus, well, that's really cool. No, it's more than cool. It is miraculous. And it is so miraculous that we kind of lose the awe of what God does every time he does something. You know that your nervous system has more than 90,000 miles of sensation in them, in your body. Mine might be a little longer, but most people, 90,000 miles of sensations. For somebody to be healed that could not see and could not speak, and that was dumb, how many understand that there's a lot going on in this man? It's not just an old hum. There's nothing about God that's old hum, by the way. He is a fantastic God. It takes 100 muscles, they say, to speak. So there are muscles in the lip and the tongue and the throat, as well as in your cheeks and jaw. To speak well, it's important to move, to move tense or relax the muscles in your face at the right time. To speak, you use your muscle, your stomach muscles, your lungs, your voice box, tongue, teeth, lips, and even your nose. Your brain coordinates all this speech. Actually, it starts in the stomach and the diaphragm. This is a large muscle that helps push air out through the lungs and into the voice box. So, we just read to you about somebody that was deaf, dumb, and could not speak, and suddenly, in a moment, that had not ever happened before, 100 muscles just started to absolutely work perfectly timed together. That's the marvelous part about God. He does everything extremely well. Praise God. Just a few more here, in Matthew 9:27. "Jesus departed thence, and two blind men followed him, crying, saying, Thou son of David, have mercy on us. And when he was coming to the house, the blind man came to him. And Jesus said unto them, Believe ye that I am able to do this. And they said unto him, Yea, Lord. Then he touched either eye, saying, according to your faith, be it unto you." Well, here's a, here's just a few little thoughts and facts that come together. You know, each of your eyes have six major muscles that control its movement. You probably know that the eye is approximately the size of a ping pong ball, but what you didn't know, that for it to work right, it contains over 2 million working parts. So he just opened the blind eyes, "Oh, wow, that's really nice." Oh, no, friend, it's more than nice. It's absolutely the miraculous recreation of almighty God. It's the same power that speaks and the sun starts shining. It's the same power that speaks and Lazarus comes out of the grave. Praise God. And so, we just read these, and we think, "Well, yeah, that's, that's really nice. Oh, friend, we got to get this in our head. It's more than just nice. We're dealing with the mighty God." Amen. He is a fantastic God. He doesn't tape you back together. He doesn't say, "Here, hold still, I got some duct tape, I'm going to fix your eye." No, that's how my grandpa would do things. If my grandpa would have had duct tape in his day, he would have built the Eiffel Tower. Thankfully, they didn't have any back then. In Luke, chapter 6, there's a wonderful portion of Scripture, and I'll just refer to just this point, that on, Jesus was fixing to do a miracle that was granted him, and there was a guy that was there that day that had a withered hand. And we know the story, but the part of the story that I really want you to look at, that verse 6, or 10 of chapter 6 of Luke, "And looking around about upon them all, he said unto the man, Stretch forth thy hand. And he did so, and his hand was restored whole," everybody said, "whole," "as the other." Well, isn't that a nice miracle? Let me tell you, friend, it's more than a nice little miracle. Each hand contains 29 major or minor bones, 29 major joints, at least 123 named ligaments, 34 muscles which move the fingers and the thumb, 17 in the palm of the hand, 18 in the forearm, 48 named nerves, three major nerves, 24 sensory branches, 21 named muscle branches, 30 named arteries, and nearly as many small named branches. That's about 251 or 2 or 3 little parts that just happened at the command of Jesus on a day, as it's said, "This go on and stretch forth your hand." Praise God. You see, we are sitting in the presence of a very mighty, mighty God. Amen? Praise God. I want you to understand a few things. When he begins to touch you, he's doing more than just touching something around a need that you might have in your body somewhere. "Well, Lord, just touch this headache, it's just a headache." No, friend, it's more than just a headache. It's connected to several parts of your body. Praise God. "God, I, I feel some just discomfort inside of me, and, and I really don't know what to do about this. God, would you just touch me tonight?" And suddenly, the hand of God begins to touch us, and, and we don't really even know what's going on when he's touching us, but suddenly, the great God of glory has just walked in and invaded our space and says, "I want you to, behold, I want to take care of you. I want you to understand, you're dealing with a great and a mighty God. Don't let the enemy of this, of God begin to take you down a path that says, 'I can't do anything anymore.'" He is all-powerful. Praise God. I got too, it got too complicated for me to go into leprosy, because there's just way too many moving parts. Well, here we are, we're in the presence of God, and we live in the presence of God, and we move and live and have our being in the presence of God. And we come into his house, and we begin to worship him, and suddenly, 90,000 miles of sensory begins to move. Praise God. And it begins to help us to start identifying, "This is what I'm really hungry for. This is what I'm looking for." Praise God. I had a, really a rough day, and I really have had my mind just jumbled up with everything that's going on. It's all right, he's got you covered. Praise God. It's nothing to him to take a very terrible situation and just begin to unwind it in your mind and disconnect some things in your sensory. He's all over the sensory places in your life. He knows how to make you happy. He knows how to take gloom away and, and the feeling of being deserted and feeling alone and feeling miserable, he knows how to just reach in at any moment. Why in the world would we want to hang on to any kind of depression or any kind of just gloom and doom, "I just can't make it anymore"? Why, you've got to have a God that you're connected to. He gets a hold of the centuries part of our life, and suddenly, something begins to happen in our life. I wonder how many muscles, nerves, and just took off there. Praise God. If you do that again, just touch about a half a dozen people, you know, see what happens, you know? Because there's about a half a dozen people that don't think there's a God in heaven anymore that can reach into your situation and take care of anything. I want you to know, we are complete in him. He is the head of everything. The enemy is not the head. Our God is the head of everything. He's got us in his hand. He's almighty. He knows how to reach into your heart, mind, soul, life, and begin to touch and change things in a second, in a moment of time. 253 muscles, nerves, suddenly just working. Had a shoulder, a shoulder, a shoulder surgery last February. It was only an inch-by-inch tear, muscles and, and some ligaments, and they just sewed them back together. Well, when man does it, oh, they can put it together. They know how to do it. They told me how they were going to do it, they showed me how they were going to do it, they informed me how I would feel after they did it, and of course, they lied just a little bit. They said, "It wouldn't be long, and I'd just, I'd be just good, three days, four days, I'd be, you know, starting physical therapy," then they, they made just a 28-day error in that, it was really 30-some days. They didn't tell me that I'd wake up feeling like I had died, I was hunting the truck that run over me. They say, "Here, take these pills, this will help you." No, it didn't. They had it all wrong. They were working on something that God intended for it to never get cut on like that, messed up like that, pulled on like that, sewed like that. He's a seamless God. Hallelujah. Man's not seamless. God's seamless. You just go ahead and start seeing a chiropractor, okay? How many, how many visits are you going to get out of that? As many as they can. And they're just going to adjust, 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 adjust. Now, I'm not, I know I'm talking about somebody's favorite thing here, I'm sorry. That's the only thing that brings you comfort. I want you to know, there's somebody that can bring you more comfort. Hallelujah. When I finally got through with 15 weeks of physical therapy, I could take a shower and not nearly pass out out of the pain if I got my arm in the wrong place. Anybody know what I'm talking about in this room? There's probably some people here that been through this. It's just a wonderful thing to get it over with. Now, thank God, yeah. Well, I have a, they'll say I have 100%, but I want you to know, it costs something to get that 100%. A lot of tears, a lot of pain. How can you have that much scar tissue in 30 days, is what I'd like to know? But that's what you get. They have to pull all that out, push those muscles, make them work again, connect it to your brain, make your brain think how to move it again, how to move it correctly again. "Oh, man, I could do this for hours, because I have hours invested in it." The world will tell you, it'll take you 12 weeks to begin to even feel like you could recover from something. I'm talking about a God who knows how to take care of your situation. Amen. He knows what's wrong with you right now. He knows what's been bugging you right now. He knows where your mind's been. He knows what that mind is connected to. He knows what, where the sensory things are that bring you back into depression that you thought you had whipped all the time, and, and all that gloom and doom and all that hopelessness, "I just can't make it anymore." Yes, you can. "If I can just get to church and hear a song, I'll be okay." Let me tell you something, friend, long before you ever hear a song, there's a God in heaven that's working to make you complete in him. Praise God. I don't know, real, you know, I could do this for a long time, but I, you know, how about just a little praising of God here for just a little bit? Praise God. Hallelujah. Why don't you turn this mighty God loose for just a little bit here? Hallelujah. God, I give you my depression marks. I stretch out my hand, God. I stretch out my mind, I stretch out my spirit, God. Hallelujah, hallelujah. I would just love to feel your glory, God, not just a little bit of it, God. I'd like to feel it down there where it's been vacant, and it's, there's a lot of deadness down there, God. I haven't really let you in there. Would you help me, God? Would you help me, God? Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. In the name of the Lord, in the name of the Lord. I feel some pressure wanting to be released out of your life, out of your mind, out of your family. Hallelujah, you are complete in him. Let his, let his power work in you, let the miracle work in you. Let his glory begin to come out of you. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Hallelujah. Praise God, praise God. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Waymaker, miracle worker, promise keeper, that's who you are. Even when I can't see it, you're working. Even if I can't feel it, you're working. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah. Praise God, praise God. Amen, hallelujah. Hallelujah. Praise God. Thank you, Brother Dylan. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Hallelujah. Praise God, praise God, praise God. Our next trustee this evening is going to be Brother Sullivan, and he is one of the three newest trustees, the first year, and he's from Fort Smith, Arkansas. Pastor's in Fort Smith, not from there originally, but pastors there, and that is the church that Brother and Sister Shelton base out of when they are home, so a little bit of, little bit of connection there, and he's got family members of his that are very connected to my mother, my grandmother's family go way back in good old Mississippi. So, we are so thrilled to have Brother Sullivan now as one of our trustees, and so Brother Sullivan, welcome and come and feel at home and take your liberty tonight. Praise the Lord, everybody. Come on, give the Lord a hand clap of praise if you received that word already. What a word from the Lord. What a word from the Lord tonight. My God can do anything. My God can do anything. Hallelujah. It's an honor to stand before you tonight, and we greet you in the wonderful name of Jesus Christ from your brothers and sisters in the great state of Arkansas in the South. We want you to know we love you, and it's just an honor to be with you and among you because we are one in Jesus Christ. We are one in Jesus Christ. Hallelujah. Amen. There is somewhat intimidation in this pulpit, once you have heard and received the Word of the Lord from Brother Dylan, and you're about to receive the Word of the Lord, and you are blessed each week to receive the Word of the Lord from your pastor and from your bishop. I'm going to tell you, I don't know if I have anything to say that hadn't already been said at some point in some way or another, but I am extremely honored to be here tonight. And your pastor has ministered in our pulpit in Fort Smith, Arkansas, as well as Bishop Wright, and we are always blessed by their presence and the anointing and the leading of the Holy Ghost as they minister the Word of God to the people of God, and we're just happy to be with you and their family tonight, and my wife and I are honored to be here. Amen. Just for the next few moments, the book of First Samuel, chapter number 30. I want to read just four verses here in the book of First Samuel, chapter 30. Now, I know it has to be quite, a little bit nervous on a Thursday evening midweek service when three ministers show up sitting beside your pastor. You're thinking, "Well, we should have brought us a little lunch or something, a snack to get us through this night." I will certainly try not to be lengthy in my presentation, but I feel like the Lord has just dropped something into my spirit, and I believe that Brother Dylan has already began that there's something already happening in the Spirit here tonight, that if you showed up for a midweek Bible study, the Holy Ghost has just come to let you know he's going to pay you a visit. And when you leave this house, there's something already happening in you, through you, and to you. Amen? And I'll receive it tonight. I'll receive it tonight. First Samuel, chapter number 30, in verse number 1, "It came to pass, when David and his men were come to Zicklag, on the third day that the Amalekites had invaded the South and Zicklag, and smitten Zicklag, and burned it with fire, and had taken the women captives that were therein. They slew not any, either great or small, but carried them away, and went on their way. Verse 3, "So David and his men came to the city, and behold, it was burned with fire. Their wives and their sons and their daughters were taken captives. Then David and the people that were with him lifted up their voice and wept, until they had no more power to weep. They wept, until they could weep no more." I want us to go to verse 16, First Samuel 30 and 16, "When they had brought him down, behold, they were spread broad upon the earth, eating and drinking, dancing, because of all the great spoil." This is the Amalekites now, and they see these Amalekites with all of their stuff that they had taken out of the land of the Philistines and out of the land of Judah. "And David smote them from the twilight even to the evening of the next day, and they escaped, not a man of them, save four hundred young men, which rode upon camels and fled." Verse number 18, "And David recovered all that the Amalekites had carried away. And David rescued his two wives." Verse 19, "There was nothing lacking to them, neither small nor great, neither son nor daughters, neither spoil nor anything that they had taken to them." David recovered all. And if you need a little tagline here tonight, I know this service happened last evening somewhere on the campus, I heard somebody mention it, we were in some meetings here, that there's, there's something going on called "Celebrate Recovery." I'm just going to, if you just need a tag on here from First Samuel, chapter 30, I want to talk to you just for a moment on "Celebrate Recovery." Celebrate recovery. I think something's happening over here in shoulder, there, God's, God is restoring something in this room here tonight. Hallelujah. Somebody said, "In Jesus' name." You may be seated, God bless you. We know from the book of John, chapter number 10, the Scripture declares that "The thief cometh but to steal." First, to steal. Steal it all, take it. Strip everything that you value, take it. And I'm just going to tell you, the enemy in Maryland is the same enemy in Arkansas that is out to steal what you have labored for, what you value in your life. The enemy is out to steal it from you. If he senses that it has great value to you, he is in the process of trying to figure out a way to, somehow, you wake up one day and it's gone, it's stripped away. You wake up one day and it's gone. It's stripped away. He wants to steal it. And then after he has stolen, the enemy will kill. "The thief cometh but to steal, to kill, to destroy." It's what John 10, I think verse number 10, 11, somewhere in there says in regards to the enemy's motives is the enemy's desire, the enemy's complete purpose is to steal and to kill and to destroy. He's not your friend. He's not my friend. He wants to take away from us. And there may be times in my life and in your life that we have felt as though that we have walked through areas, valleys, struggles, problems, issues, situations that we did not understand. And from our evaluation, it was loss. It was deduction. It was hurt and pain and sorrow. It was loss of sleep. It was pain. It was loss of wages. It was economical decrease. It was issues of relationships that are deducted from our life. It is damaged relationships. It is all kinds of things that the enemy likes to lead us to believe that it is now taken from you. It's over. It's gone. It's done. You had a dream. You had a vision. You had a hope. You had a desire. You prayed a prayer and it didn't come to pass. It didn't happen. The Lord didn't hear you. He don't know where you live. He don't know your address. The devil will feed us all kinds of stuff. He'll tell us all kinds of things because he's trying to convince us that if I can get you away from the will of God, I'll get you out of the will of God. The enemy is after. The enemy is oppressor and trying in every method and way. He'll attach anything he can to get to where you live and what you feel and what you want to try to distress and depress and struggle from you the values that you and I have. And we're doing the best we can to do what is right. David and his 600 men were out doing what they were supposed to do. They're fighting the enemy. They're warring against the adversary. They're away from home. They're not in their houses with their families. They're not with their children. They're not playing in the streets with their children. They're not enjoying their meals around the table. It's all, they're out fighting the battle elsewhere. When the enemy comes in into Ziklag and the enemy into their house, into their streets, into their family, takes their oxen, takes all their possessions, takes their children. The Bible specifically says that they didn't kill them. They just took them. "They took them as captives and led them astray, took them away, got them out of there, and burned their houses, the houses that were there, that were their designated living quarters." They wanted these men to see from a distance a trail of smoke. And by the time they got there, all that was left was a rubble of what used to be. And as these men pilfered through the ashes of their houses, as they pilfered through all the ruins that was there, they were looking for their son, their daughter, their wife. They were looking for their families. Can you imagine how taxing this must have been, emotional this must have been, how hurtful this must have been? Here we are, out doing what we thought was right. And now look what's happened to what we valued most. We've lost it. Our houses are not, they can be replaced, but what we're digging through the rubble for is not our houses. It's not the doors. It's not the sentimental values of a picture or something that somebody made. It's my son. I'm looking for the remains of my family. I'm looking for my spouse and for my children. And I'm digging and I don't see them and I'm searching and I don't find them. And I just knew that I was gonna have them here when I returned, but now they're not here. Now they're gone. Now the crying starts. Grown men cry. And the pain starts. Grown men hurt. Not just physically from the burns or from the toll of tearing. They were men of war. They understood hard work and toil. They knew how to make it through some stuff. But this moment now is not about just somewhere else. It's about home. It's about my street. It's about my house. It's about where's my son? Where's my daughter? Where's my spouse? Where's my family? Where are they at now? Until they thought of stoning David. You know the story. I told you, I'm not gonna preach anything you hadn't heard. I mean, I can't imagine that. You know what I'm preaching here tonight from First Samuel, chapter number 30. But this is the caption of what I see in this, is that in this, David had to find somewhere and talk to God and he encouraged himself in the Lord. He didn't have anybody to encourage him at that moment. His 600 mighty men were now, they weren't encouraging men. They weren't together people. They weren't unified at the moment, except possibly to kill him. And he said, you know what, I've gotta do some praying. And he got somewhere and started encouraging himself in the Lord. He started saying, "God, you know that I don't know why you've done this because I'm feeling the same pain they're feeling. My wife's gone. My children are gone. My house is also in a rubble and I don't know what to do here because we're all in the same boat. But I need you to help me here and I need a word from the Lord. I need some direction in this moment from you." Are you with me on a Thursday night here? I'm just kinda feeling my way through because all day I've heard, I've heard an echo of the Holy Ghost speaking to me, recovery. 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 There's something about to change in the Holy Ghost that says the enemy has come to your house and the enemy has come to your situation and the enemy has come to your job and the enemy has come to your body. And the enemy is trying to take away from you what you value most. But in that process, the Lord has got a word that says whatever you gonna go through is not gonna be the end. What you're facing right now in your own family, in your own body, I'm sick, I got a bad report from the doctor, I don't know how I'm gonna face this, my son and my daughter or my spouse or somebody, my close friend, my job, my situation, it's gonna shakey ground right now. I'm digging through some rubble and I don't really know how to respond to Well, it's not over yet. It's not over yet. Lord, what do I do? I've gotta have this prayer meeting to define how I survive this moment in this time. I've gotta figure out how in the world do I get from this situation to where you want me to be? And the scripture just simply, the Lord spoke to him and said, "David, you just go forward. You shall recover all. You're gonna get it all back." Now, if I had a moment to talk to you about this, I wanna take you down this road now. When he got this word that said, "Pursue after them, go after them, you're gonna get it back." Because on this journey, they went just a little ways until they got to a brook. And when they got to this place, there were 200 of them of the 600 mighty men that said, "We cannot go any farther. We are weak. We cannot journey another day." And they were left at the brook. And David and 400 men pursued on after their families, after their children, after their spoils. We're going after it. We're gonna pursue after what the enemy has taken from me. I'm gonna claim my health back. I'm gonna claim my job back. I'm gonna claim my family and my relationships back. I'm not gonna be deterred. I'm gonna get up and move forward. When they got, they were led. They found the right person, got connected to the right one who took them right to where, I read it in your hearing. They seen the enemy. They stood at an observation and they looked at the enemy who had taken their children and burned their houses and taken their wives. And they were dancing in their streets rejoicing of the spoils that they had taken. But the Bible says David took his 400 men and he pursued into that situation. And David conquered them and he smote them, except for 400 men, young men, which rode upon camels and fled. And he let them go. And he smote all of the other adversaries. And you know what he did? He took his wives back and he took the children back and he took all the spoils back. And he recovered all that the Amalekites had carried away. David rescued them that night. He rescued them. And then he made his journey back toward Ziklag. He said, "Now we have our families and we have the spoils." There's just two points I wanna finish with right here in this conclusion that I just kept hearing coming back in my spirit all day long about recovery. See, the Bible says that "David took all the flocks and the herds which they drave out before those other cattle and said, 'This is David's spoil.'" When they got to that brook where those other 200 men who are weak, who couldn't make the journey and who couldn't fight, now there was some among them that came with all of the spoils and the rescue that said, "Let's don't give them anything. They don't deserve anything. They didn't fight with us. They didn't go with us. They were too weak to fight with us." David said, "Not so. Not so. There are some who are weak and cannot fight. They needed time at the brook to renew. They needed time to get their strength and their energy and their fresh fire and a fresh anointing and a fresh day." I just wanna tell you, if last Sunday you couldn't shout because you were going through something, that don't mean this Sunday you can't shout. Just because you couldn't pray last week, don't mean you gotta give up praying forever. Next week, get back in the fray and start back praying because God is saying, just because you're struggling right now. I'm preaching to you that whatever, everybody don't wanna preach this, but the fact is sometimes I get tired and sometimes I gotta rest and sometimes I'm struggling and sometimes I'm not perfect and sometimes I need a little help along the way. And thank God, there's a spirit in the house of God that says, "When you're weak, it's okay. We're gonna pick you up on the way back and we got some blessings we wanna give to you and we got some people we wanna bless you with. We wanna see your families connected again. We wanna see the spoils re..." See, when God gives you, you may be seated, when God gives you, when you recover all with God, all is different from your all. Because my mind says all that was taken from Ziklag, I'm gonna get it back. But if you read this scripture, you find out that's not all David got. David got all that was with them before they ever came to Ziklag. They had been spoiling people before they got to Ziklag. And when God says, "I'm gonna give you all," he don't just mean what the enemy took from you. He... There's some fresh stuff in your blessings. There's some new stuff in your blessings. You shall recover all. You're gonna get more than what you lost. You're gonna get more than what you've been struggling with. God's gonna give you more than what you can imagine. Somebody ought to be celebrating recovery. Because even though you weak, you're gonna get a blessing. And even though you're struggling, God's got more than what you can ever imagine. If you went to fight, God's gonna bless you. If you weak and didn't get to make the journey, God's still gonna bless you. Shaddalaboh shaddalabah. Come on, you need to wake up on Friday morning and tell the devil, "I'm gonna get it all back." You need to wake up on Monday morning and tell the enemy, "I'm getting it all back. I'm getting more than you stole. I've been sick. I've been tired. I've been weary, but it's coming back to me. I'm gonna get my feeling in my hands back. I'm gonna get the feeling in my feet back. God's gonna heal my body. God's gonna heal my shoulder. God's gonna do things that only God can do. You shall recover more than what's been taken." I don't want to miss this. I don't wanna miss this last... There's just these two points that's in this story that the Holy Ghost spoke to me. And this is something I'm working on. But if you're weak, if you're weak, don't quit. Don't lay down and die. We coming after you. We may be on a journey, but you stay right here at this brook. If you struggling, you show back up Sunday. If you struggling, you show back up Thursday. If you struggling, you may not be as strong as you once were, but you fought somewhere. You're among us. You just hang on. We're coming back for the weak and the weak are gonna be blessed just like the strong. And somebody put your hands together tonight and say, "I will celebrate my recovery." Come on, celebrate your recovery tonight.
Hallelujah. Come on. Come on. Not just 15 seconds of celebrating it. Come on, let's let it flow. Let it flow out of you right now. Come on. Gilaboko shattayandolobos shattarabah. Gilobokoshaha. Come on, the Holy Ghost is doing something right now. We're not in a hurry. Come on, we're not in a hurry. The Holy Ghost is working. In the name of Jesus, in the name of Jesus, in the name of Jesus, in the name of Jesus. In the name of Jesus, in the name of Jesus, in the name of Jesus. Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah. Hallelujah, hallelujah. In the name of Jesus, in the name of Jesus, in the name of Jesus. In the name of Jesus, 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 in the name of Jesus. Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah.
Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah. Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah. Hey, I am rabo kosatayandolobosatara. I am rabo korriandolobosatara. I am rabo korriandolobosatara.
Hallelujah, hallelujah. Bless you, you can be seated. Amen. Appreciate the word of the Lord from, from, uh, we got Dylan Sullivan and Sharp. Sounds like a legal firm up here. Or we could say James Timothy and Paul. Now that sounds biblical there, you know? Um, it's good to be with you tonight. Love your pastor, your bishop, your church. Amen. Uh, I will say, we are here not because of the pay, folks. No, that we're making less than minimum wage, I assure you. We're here because we genuinely care about your church. We care about your ministry. We care about your future and, uh, and we love you and we love your ministers. We love what you're doing. We believe in you and we're willing to sacrifice our time for you because we care. And just want you to know that. I want you to know that. We love you. Amen. Love your pastor. Pastor David Wright is absolutely the man for this pulpit. And I love and respect this man of God. Amen. I love him. Amen. And his family, his wife Angie, they were, yeah, give it up for Angie and the children. Amen. We, we were privileged to have them, took them away from you. They were with us last weekend. And, uh, so you get, you get me for a week, but we only got them for a weekend. So I've been around here a while. But you know, uh, he ministered at a, they did at a ladies' retreat, or listen to me, a marriage retreat, and it was a blessing to have them and appreciate their ministry very, very much. Well, we've heard about being complete, made whole in Him. Recovering all, get it back. So maybe I'll scatter it in the wind. We'll find out what's gonna happen here in the next few minutes. But in Psalms 138, I too, this isn't one I want to minister, but this is just something I couldn't get away from. You know, sometimes you just can't think of anything else and you may as well just yield to it. It says this, "The Lord will perfect that which concerneth me." Why don't you stop and think about that? What I'm concerned about, God's gonna perfect it. Now I want you to, he throws in thy mercy, O Lord, endureth forever, but look at this. Forsake not the work of thine own hands. You made me, God. You'll perfect that which concerns me. Let me put it this way. If I'm concerned about it, God gets concerned about it. If it's something that's bothering me, it starts bothering God. The Lord will perfect that which concerneth me. And then in Philippians 2 and 13, a lot of you could quote this one. For it is God which worketh in you both to will and to do of His good pleasure. Amen. Amen. Now these scriptures are interesting to me because one of them says, if it concerns me, God is going to move in that thing and he's going to perfect it or complete it or make it whole, brother Dylan. He'll move in it. He'll perfect that, that I get concerned about. Now, I want you to notice that my concerns got to be involved in that before God gets concerned. And this other scripture says that God can start working on my concern. It says that he works in you, the desire, the will, the, the, the concern, if you will, to do His good pleasure. He moves in you. Amen. Now, now notice that in all of these things that, that God uses, is moved, if you will, by what moves me. And God can move me to do things. He can work on my concern, on my passion, on what I am desiring, could very well be the will of God. You know, God will put things in our heart, dreams, visions, and the devil come along and say, that's just your pride. And the truth is, it's God working in you, the will. And that concern and desire can move God to bring something perfect to pass in my life. Amen. And think about this now, how many times in your Bible do you read, "They cried unto the Lord." They cried out unto God. And then it says this, "They cried unto the Lord and God heard." What is it? Their concern, their passion, their desire got God's attention. Amen. You read that over and over in your Bible. In fact, it says, "The cry of Sodom and Gomorrah came up into the ears of God." What's the cry of Sodom and Gomorrah? What's the cry of a city that's so perverted and wicked that he couldn't even find 10 righteous people there? Maybe it was Lot's vexed spirit. Maybe it was Lot saying, oh, God, what am I gonna do here? Well, God heard from heaven. I don't know what that cry was. Maybe it was Lot. Maybe it was somebody that was suffering, but it got God's attention and it brought angels into that place and it brought deliverance to Lot and at least two of his family. Now there's another term you know, it's, it's the burden of the Lord. The burden of the Lord, the prophet says, upon me. What is a burden? Well, it's a, it's a concern. It's a weight. It's something that's got that prophet going, oh my God! It's a burden. Amen. A lot of preachers know this, they'll get burdened with a word from God. And until they come to that pulpit and pass that burden on to you, they don't get it off their back. They're carrying the weight of that message. Sometimes your pastor walks to this pulpit with a weight on him that's, that's like a thousand pounds as he's gotta deliver something he doesn't know quite how to do. But when he gets it off, he's free. But now it's your burden. You know what a burden will do? It'll cause you to cry out to God. It'll cause you to get a hold of God. And you know what getting a hold of God will do? God will perfect that which concerneth you. God will move in that situation. God will change anything. David cries out and says, God, what do I do? I don't know which way to go. I don't know what to do now. But God heard, God heard, God heard and said, go, you shall surely recover all. But it took a concern. It took them, those men crying out. It took David crying out. Now listen, it's when Zion travails, she brings forth children. It's when a church gets concerned. Scripture, that, that scripture, when Zion travails, she, she brought forth children, her children is literally talking about the nation of Israel being born in a day. Back there in Isaiah, can a nation be born in a day? Yes, yes. It happened one May in 1948. A nation was born in a day. Can a man be born in a day if he'll cry out? Can a church be born in a day if somebody will cry out? Look at the day of Pentecost. There's something about a cry, there's something about a, a passion, or something about this desire. Why was Israel born in a day? I'll tell you why. Six million Jews were just killed by Hitler. Persecution was all over Europe. They had no place to go home to. All of a sudden, they're escaping and getting released. Where do they go? They, they go to a land that they haven't owned in nearly 2,000 years. Remember as a boy watching that on television. My daddy had a little black and white TV, the screen was about this big. And, and he yelled at my, my mother and he said, uh, he said, Thel? Her name was Thelma. Thel, come in here and look at this. Well, that got my attention as a boy. So I walked over and looked and I saw, I saw a rowboat hitting the sands of a beach and people jumping out of that, four or five people jumping out and kissing the sand. And, and then they, they scanned the beach and there were many boats and they scanned the, the Mediterranean Sea and there were little boats everywhere coming. And he said, have you ever seen anything like that? Those people are coming from everywhere. Yeah. Let me tell you something, God will perfect that which concerns us. When people start crying out to God, God's going to move the world. God can move the nations. God can move people. God can crush enemies. God can restore and recover all. God can make everything whole again. I'm telling you, God can do anything. But you've gotta have a cry. You gotta have a desire. There's gotta be a passion. You know, the indifferent, lazy, non-concerned, non-committed attitude never gets anything from God. In fact, I don't even know if the lazy can be saved. Maybe it's not kosher to say that, I don't know. But I don't know that the lazy will even be saved. Scripturally, of course. You wicked slothful servant, you knew what I required and you wouldn't do it. Cast him into outer darkness. There's gotta be something in us that wakes up and says, I need God. Something in us has gotta say, I got to have more of God. Amen. Amen. Yeah, yeah, he healed, he healed a man with a withered hand. You know, everybody thought he was a sinner and his mother and daddy were sinners if he's born that way and, and, and that was the Israeli mindset at that time. And he said, stretch forth your issue, your problem, what everybody mocks you for, what has branded you your whole life, give it to me and I'll make it whole. But he put himself in that place. That blind man, you couldn't shut him up. Have mercy! He cried out. He cried out. Amen. That little woman with an issue, you couldn't stop her. Have mercy on me, son of David! She cried out. God perfected that which concerned her. That, that woman with an issue pushed through that crowd till she got a hold of that garment. You're not stopping her. There's passion in her. It moves God. Amen. Amen. Concern, passion, what are you concerned about? Nothing. Your belly or you got a soul you're concerned about? You got a lost soul? I'm telling you, God is moved by what concerneth me. What concerns me? Gotta perfect it or he'll make it whole. He'll make it complete, as one translation says. Now think about this. It doesn't matter what it is. It doesn't matter how simple it is. It doesn't matter how little it is. God is concerned with what concerns me. I said, "God is concerned." I don't care how small it is. God is concerned with what concerns me. I've seen this thousands of times, thousands of times. Little things. You know, when I want a parking place, I say, "Jesus, I need a parking place." And I don't want one out there in the back forty. I want the best one. Give me a parking place. I can't count the times, brother. I had to get into the courthouse. Listen, God's concerned. I had to get some plans. I had to present them to the planner. I had to get an address. I had to get several things done. This is nuts. I'm going in at four o'clock. They close at four thirty. There's no parking place. I've got little time to go. I've got men working. I've got builders working. And I pull up to the courthouse in Oklahoma City. And there's no parking place anywhere. And so I circle, and I said, "God, I need one. I need it at the front door, and I need it now." I pull back around. I come around. Somebody pulls out. I pull in. I go in. There's people everywhere. There's people everywhere. And there's no getting in there. I mean, they're lined up. And I said, "God, I gotta get through this. I've gotta get through this." And this is just the way it fell. There's several people there. And there's one woman comes walking through to give papers to the other people that are working the counter, helping these people whom I am in line. I wave at her. I'm just, I'm friendly. You know, I know only sinners are supposed to be friendly. Saints aren't supposed to do this, but somebody didn't convert me yet. So I wave and smile. And this woman smiles back. And then she says, "Come here." I go up. She says, "What you needing?" I laid it all out. She said, "Oh, you're at the wrong place." I said, "This is where they told me to come." She said, "No, no. You go to this floor right below us, and I'm gonna call them right now, and they're gonna take you in right now." So I go down there, and there's a line of people. And somebody, as I walk in the door, said, "Are you Mr. Sharp?" "Yes, I am. Come up here." God is concerned with what concerns me. It doesn't matter how big it is. It doesn't matter how little it is. I've got a God that is concerned. Let me tell you something really silly. My granddaughter likes rabbits, rabies. They're rabies to Phoebe. She likes rabies. Well, if my granddaughter likes rabies, bless God, I'm gonna have rabies. That's all there is to it. And so I'm out mowing the yard. And I said, "God, Phoebe likes rabbits. I want rabbits." I said, "God, I want you to give me rabbits." Now, some of you spend your life killing them, but Phoebe likes rabbits. So I don't know how long it takes to, do you know how long it takes to make a rabbit? About thirty-eight minutes? It's not very long, how long it takes to make a rabbit. I'm telling you, it's short. And so I'm out mowing my yard, like, a week or two later. Folks, it's not long. And rabbits are running everywhere. Now, I'm not exaggerating. I won't exaggerate. They're running everywhere. In fact, I ran over one with a mower. Oh, everybody. And so I thought, "All right, that's enough. I'm not gonna kill any more rabies. I prayed for these things. These are holy rabbits, and I'm running over them." So I go and get me a five-gallon bucket. And I go around the yard, and now they're little. And I pick up seventeen rabbits in my backyard. I'm carrying a five-gallon bucket half-full of rabbits. And I said, "God..." And while I'm picking them up, a hawk is diving to kill one of them in the backyard. So I'm running out, shooting hawks off my rabies. God cares. God is concerned with what concerns me. Do you realize how unimportant a few rabbits really are? And with the God of creation, not only can He heal and make whole, not only can He recover all, but He can just do about anything else too. I'm talking anything else. Some of you, some of you looking at me like I just fell off the truck. Do you know I believe God cares about everything that concerns me? If it concerns me, God's concerned. If it concerns, now I'll tell you, I'm gonna give you the flip side of that. If it concerns God, I'm concerned. And He works the will in me to do His good pleasure. And so a lot of the concerns that I have are actually put there by God. Now, I don't think God put the concern in my heart for a rabbit. But my point is, it doesn't just have to be a God thing. I don't have any direction tonight. I'm just going with what I felt. I'm in my office. I'm getting ready to preach a message. I've studied it. And I'm studying, and all of a sudden, I get this burden for my son, who is in, I don't know at that time, maybe freshman. I don't know, tenth, eighth grade, ninth grade, tenth, I don't know, somewhere around there. And I get a burden for him. I kneel down beside my desk on the floor, and I go into intercession. I mean, travailing intercession for him. And after about fifteen, twenty, I don't know, maybe thirty minutes, it lifted. So I feel like, "All right, everything's okay." Don't have any idea. I get up, set up my desk. Telephone rings. Pick up the telephone. Hello? Reverend Sharp, yes. This is the principal at the school. Your son has been in a fight. There's been some trouble here. Could you come to the school? Absolutely. Certainly, I can come to this school. All right? "Oh, Reverend Sharp, I'd like to say something to you before you come." This is not, I think you need to know this. There just happened to be a teacher that was around the corner and heard this stuff breaking out before it broke out. And then this teacher just happened to look and saw it break out. And I want you to know, your son did nothing to start this. And Reverend Sharp, I have these boys in my office, and I talk to them individually. And I want you to know, I'm incredibly impressed with your son. And I mean, he just starts telling me all this. "Well, let me tell you something. I care about my son." And so God puts me in intercession. Now, 'cause what concerns me concerns God. But what concerns God concerns me. And I'm on my knees in intercession, and God's moving a teacher to get a teacher in place. And God's moving through that situation in every way. The indifferent, lackadaisical, lazy saint will never experience some things like this. You know what I'm talking about? I was, uh... I'm driving down the road one day. Just driving. And God moved in the car. And I start crying. I'm weeping. I'm weeping so hard that I can hardly see. And I miss my turn, which Brother Dylan knows that's a normal thing for me. But I miss my turn because of crying. And I think, "Oh, well, I'll just go down another mile, and I'll circle around and come..." And as I'm driving this road, I didn't intend to drive. I'm driving down the road. The Lord says to me, "Turn in here." And I pull into a driveway of a very large house. And I know better than to think when God starts dealing that. Well, you don't think, because what happens is, get the word of the Lord. The next thought's you, and the next thought's the devil. So I just head to the door and ring the doorbell, and I say, "Oh, no, God. What do I do now?" I ring the doorbell, and this guy is a high-rolling lawyer. He is a very wealthy man. There's a picture of him with the President of the United States hanging on his wall. And he's a high-roller, all right? Now, I want a witness to him, but he's got a, he's got company. And he's serving cocktails and hors d'oeuvres and all this kind. It's just not the ideal place to walk in and say, "Hey, I'm a tongue-talking Pentecostal. I would like to invite you." No, it wasn't that kind of environment. So I greeted him and talked to him just a little while. And said, "I'd like to come back and see you, visit with you again sometime." He said, "Come on." I left. I'm back the next night. He's not there. I'm back the next night. He's not there. I come back the next night. I catch him. He's alone. Answer to prayer. I go in, and I start witnessing to him. He sits me down at the kitchen table. I start telling him about the Holy Ghost. I tell him about what God's done in my life and what God can do in His life. I just start sharing with him everything. And it was, was I nervous? You better believe I was nervous. Because this was not an open ear to me, but I had a word from God. And so I talked to him about it all. And then he tells me, he says this, "You know, you're about the fourth person to pop out of the woodwork and talk to me about God." He said, "This has got to be more than coincidence." And I said, "Mike, there was a time when Jesus showed up for Israel. And He, it was their time of visitation. And He came to reach them, and they rejected Him. And the judgment of God fell upon Israel." I said, "Mike, don't miss this time of visitation in your life. This is a time of visitation." Well, anyway, I felt it strong. I pulled on him, pulled on him. He wouldn't do anything about it. He just, "Listen, listen to me. What concerns God concerns me. What concerns me concerns God." I leave. I don't hear anymore from this guy. Three years later, Brother Dylan, I start getting a burden for him. I can't get rid of the burden. It's on me. It's on me, Brother Sullivan. I can't, I can't get rid of it. It's heavy. I start, I said, I tried to find him. I contacted people that knew him and couldn't, and they said, "Oh, yeah, I can find him for you." Nobody could find him. And finally, I got frustrated with this, and I said, "God, I cannot find him. If you want me to teach him a Bible study, you have him call me." The next day, I happened to drive by my dad's place. Dad's not there. I run in the house to get a drink of water, took a drink of water, put the glass down. I'm heading out the door. Telephone rings. Pick it up just like his moan, say hello. And he says, "Is this Paul Sharp?" I said, "Yeah." He said, "This is Mike so-and-so." And he said, "Do you remember me?" I said, "Oh, yeah, I remember you." "Do you remember the time you came to my house and you prophesied the judgment of God over me?" I said, "Well, I remember, but not just exactly like that. But yeah, I remember." And he said, "Well, I was given my testimony." Now, this was a non-church guy. "I was given my testimony to my grandma. And she said, 'Have you contacted that Pentecostal preacher?'" And he said, "No, I haven't." She said, "You need to get a hold of him." And so he said, "So I just got a hold of you 'cause my grandma told me I had to." He said, "You remember what you said to me about the judgment of God?" I said, "Well, yeah." He said, "You know, I was in the process of bribing a juror in a murder trial. And I got caught in a sting operation. And when you walked out my door, I said, 'What's he know? He's a holy roller.'" And if you weren't a senator or a lawyer or somebody of that status, you were nobody to me. And I said, 'What's he know? He's a holy roller.' And he said, "But I got caught." And he said, "In one week, I lost my license to practice law. I lost my home. I lost a million dollars. And I was setting in prison. And it kept going through my head. You better not miss your time of visitation." And he said, "I just had to call you and tell you that." I said, "Well, Mike, let me tell you another thing." I said, "I've been praying for you for the past few days. You've been on my heart. And I told God, 'If you want me to teach him a Bible study, you have him call me.'" And there was a little bit of silence, and he said, "When do we start?" I'm telling you with God, what concerns God concerns me. What concerns me concerns God. We are partners together in this thing. But hear me now. This doesn't come to somebody that just doesn't really care. That's somebody that's not gonna get passionate. But who in here is gonna get passionate about the will of God, about the work of God, about souls, about the things of God? Who's gonna get passionate? Something's gotta stir us up. I can drag my feet around and just say, "Oh, me, I'm going through this. I've got this problem. I've got that problem." Or I can get up and shake myself and say, "Get me an ifit. I'm gonna do something for God. I'm gonna see God move." What about you? What's burdening you? Anybody got a burden? If you do, God probably put it there. What are you gonna do with it? I'm telling you, I'd take it to Jesus. I'd give it to God. I'd get a hold of God. I'd say, "God, what do you want?" I don't know about you, but I'm after a move of God. I want one in my life. Now, I know I may have said some of these things here before. I don't know what I've said before. I'm shotgunning at you. I just had one thought, and I'm giving it to you. I paid $185 for a tree and planted it in my front yard. That's a lot of money, pay for a tree. Now, maybe you're rich, and you can just throw $185 away, but when I do that, that's a lot of money. And I better get a good tree. Well, I didn't. And that tree had a genetic default. It would grow at about a five-degree, ten-degree angle. It never grows straight. And it was a blue atlas cedar. Pretty tree if it was straight. And I staked it. I'd pull it over. I'd dig the earth and turn the whole root ball. And water it and baby it, straighten it up, untie it, and in a month, it's at a ten-degree angle. I don't care what you do to that tree. I babied it. I repulled it. I restaked it. I did everything, Brother David, you could do to make that tree grow straight. I prayed for it. That tree just wasn't gonna grow straight. It just wasn't gonna do it. It just wasn't gonna do it. And one day, it's, now, now it's big, now it's big, now it's, it's 25 feet tall. And it's at a stupid angle. And I, I'm, I'm out working my yard and, and all of a sudden, I, I see that tree, and that's it. Now, I've been very careful what I've said about that tree. Because I know what I speak's gonna happen. So, I bless my trees. I bless my rabbits. I bless everything. Well, I, I, but I, but, but I stood all I could stand, so I couldn't stand no more. And so, I saw that tree and it just hit me. It was it, I was done. I said, "I curse you! Die! I'm through with you, you crooked tree." And I went right back to work. I'm out there two days later. And I, I walk up to that thing and, and I'm getting the hose, and I bump it. I just, not any harder than that, sir. And when I did, a shower hit me. And I looked around, and I looked up, and I bumped it, and needles fell everywhere. And I reached up and grabbed a limb that was 1 to 1 and 1/2 inches. And I bent it and it popped like it was softer than cardboard. I looked at that, that tree, in 48 hours, was six months dead. And then I, I start walking away from that tree. And I'm a little bit, you know, this is a serious moment right now. And I'm walking away from that tree and God says, "Be careful what you say. Be careful what you say." There's something about God that what concerns us concerns Him. And He will complete, perfect, make whole. The, another translation says, "Finish what concerns me." But the key in that is my passion. Are you concerned? Are you concerned? Are you concerned about this city? Are you concerned about, I drive through your city, it's a beautiful city. I, everywhere I go, I see people. And I'm, I'm sorry, but here's the way I look at things, I go, I look at them, I say, "Oh, they'd make a good Pentecostal. They'd make a good Pentecostal." Uh, I, I see them spiked up and orange and green and every color and think, "They'd make a good Pentecostal. Oh, they'd fit right in. They're bold as a lion. I'd love to have them in the house of God. They'd make a good Pentecostal." Hallelujah! What about it? What about it? What concerns you? What concerns you? What concerns you? Are you concerned? If you're not, you got no burden, you got no concern, you don't care? Doc, you're not getting anything from God. Does anybody hear me tonight? Does anybody hear me tonight? Is, you just wanna come, hear a good message, get your ear tickled? Walk out and say, "Oh, that was cool, went to church." I don't want that! I want more than that! I want God! I wanna move! I want a miracle! I want wholeness! I wanna recover all! I wanna see God doing everything that I need! Stand up with me tonight. Anybody got burdened tonight? Anybody got a lost soul on your heart tonight? Anybody needing a miracle tonight? Anybody got a withered hand and you just can't seem to do what you need to do? Has the enemy stolen from you? Has the enemy taken from you? Has the enemy spoiled your house? Taken your children? Somebody that the enemy has taken your children, get up here right now. It's time to pray a little warfare against this mess. Somebody get passionate! No! Give me back my baby! Give me back my children! No, you can't have them! I said, "No, they're coming home. They're coming back. They're coming back." God, bring them home! No, you can't have them! You can't have them! Cry out! Cry out! Hear us, God! Hear us, God! Somebody need a miracle tonight? Cry out! God! 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 Bring them home! Bring them home! God! Bring them, God! Release them! Release them! Release them! Release them! Yes! Yes! Release them! Yes! Come home! Somebody, 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 carry it. Give it to God! Yes! Somebody, believe God! Believe God! I believe God. I believe God. God, you can do anything! Make these families whole! Recover all! Yes! Somebody believe him right now. Come on now, believe God. These altars are gonna fill up. Somebody's coming home!